Coming tonight, I know it's a cold episode. So call the meetings of order. So call please.
Dr. Carolina?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Ms. Moby?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Palm?
Here.
Jenny Lee? And Jay Serat?
Here.
Long friend.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we rise to the pledge of allegiance, I just wanted to make a brief statement. Today we learned of the passing of Dr. Frank Calabria. As many of you know, Dr. Calabria served as interim high school principal here in Montpel for two years, and I believe he also served as a vice principal, as a, not an interim, as a real vice principal in one of our schools prior to that. During that time Frank earned the respect, trust, and affection of the staff, parents, and students. Frank was a consummate educator and gentleman. He was a generous man who gave freely of his time and wisdom. And boy, did he have a gift of gab. He could regale you for hours with great stories of his life and experiences. He served on the Parsippany Board of Education for an unbelievable forty years, more than forty years. He was a respected member of this community and an active member of this church. Frank was a devoted husband, father, and grandfather. And tonight we mourn his loss with his family. We extend to the whole Calabria family our deepest sympathies. In Dr. Frank Calabria's memory, please remain standing after the pledge of allegiance for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise to the pledge.
United States of America, and to the people of which this stands, we are a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hands.
Thank you so much.
Karen, before we move into the agenda, I'd like to make a comment about Dr. Calabria. I first had the pleasure of meeting Frank in 1974. And that's when he started in the high school as vice principal. He remained there for fourteen years. In 1988, let Montpel High School go up to Sparta as principal. Having known Frank, as I mentioned, for over forty years, having worked with him on various projects here and in Parsippany, I think that a wonderful man will be lost by everyone. His family values, his professionalism, his dedication to children can't be, it can't be recognized in words. Frank's, it was ironic, I've been in touch with Frank during the last six months during his illness. As late as last Thursday, I called him, talked to his wife, Angela. Frank was going through some tough medicine, medical procedures. And I would like, I'd ask each of you, when you get a chance, just say a small prayer for him and his family. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to add that I graduated from Parsippany Hills in 1974. Frank Calabria started on the Parsippany Board of Education two months before I graduated from my school. He appears in my high school yearbook at the Board of Education. He is a consummate professional, consummate gentleman, and for those of you who are familiar with the high school, came to us after some turbulence at the high school, going back a couple of years, some administrative issues there. He supplied great leadership and stability at a time we needed it. And we owe him a debt of gratitude. He will be very greatly missed.
I don't want to go on too much, but I just want to mention that I knew Frank on another level that not everyone was fortunate enough. And that was that I worked with Frank for three years. And I'd like to just say a couple of things about the type of man that he was. And these three words come to mind. For a couple generations of teachers that worked in Montpel Township High School, Frank was, number one, a confidant. He was a counselor. He was an advisor to scores and scores of young people, people of all ages actually, who had made the commitment to dedicate their life to the profession of education and teaching. He was a very rare breed individual. He always, always had enough time to care about you, to work with you, and to help you. I would have to say that in the history of the high school, with a couple of names that come to mind and you see on the school building, he was a mentor par excellence. He was a very great, kind, loving man. Frank Calabria. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, not to belabor, but Frank came into the high school, as you said, Mike, at a very difficult time. And one thing he very quickly did was learn the names of as many students and members of the staff as he could, and in the short period of time that he was there. Well, the one thing I can say about, which I'm sure everyone echoes, is to know him was to love him. Very special man and a consummate educator.
Thank you. Jim, would you please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting law statement?
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to, with advance notice, to attend a meeting in public bodies in which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, Montpel Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. The minutes of the meeting has been posted in the municipal building, all Montpel Public Schools, Montpel Public Library, Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, Montpel Public School website, and every housing facility.
Thank you. High school student representative, how are you, Ken?
Doing great.
Good.
So first with sports, the varsity ice hockey team beat West Morris Hills last week, one-nothing. And only Josh Parrot is that high school's new all-time shutout sweeter. Alex Rogers and John Lee, two seniors at the high school, were crowned state relay shot put champions earlier this month. They broke the school record with their performance. The boys varsity basketball team is now eleven and two, as they beat Morristown last Thursday and Jefferson on Saturday. The girls varsity basketball team is now six and seven, as they defeated Kinnellon on Saturday, forty-six to forty-two. The team, along with my partner Jenny Lee, is currently battling against Randolph at the high school. With both basketball teams' recent wins, they have advanced to the second round of the county tournament, and they'll continue throughout the week. The swim team is looking forward to a huge meet tomorrow against Union at three o'clock. And the bowling team was recently crowned county champions after winning the Morris County Tournament. Moving on to clubs, the forensics team continues their dominant season and had their first team victory of the year this past weekend, placing first among over twenty-five teams at the region potential. The tournament brings in competitors from around the nation and had upwards of twelve hundred this year. Our team had thirty-five novice finalists, varsity semifinalists, and varsity finalists. As advisor Ms. Gormley described it, Saturday was an absolutely awesome, no-nonsense, razzle-dazzle kind of day. These were the placings for our finalists. In sixth were Zach Feldman in humorous interpretation and Athena Mumua in poetry reading. In fifth were Purnath Kumar in extemporaneous speaking, Vithya Shinahali in declamation, and Natasha Dusats in impromptu. In third were Purnath Kumar in impromptu, Noel One-Fashion in extemporaneous speaking, Matthew Kiltsbury in Congress, and Arushi Gupta in declamation. And second were Vicki Han in varsity Lincoln Douglas debate, Ravi Upanja in JV Lincoln Douglas debate, James Burnett in poetry, Christopher Meyer in impromptu, Ryan Ruelio in Congress, and Andrew Hung in novice Lincoln Douglas debate. And the champions were Claire Sullivan in poetry reading, Emily Liang in declamation, James Min in varsity Lincoln Douglas debate, Jay Serat in extemporaneous speaking, and Sean Ralphie in improvisational acting. The future business leaders of America Club, or FBLA, recently had many students advance to the state competition. Those that advanced on the individual level were Jeff Yang in Accounting One, Ricky Zhang in Introduction to Business, Kinjol Sharma in Introduction to Business Communication, Marc Chaban in Introduction to Information Technology, and Alice Lee, as well as Amish Patel in Spreadsheet Applications. For team competitions advancing to states are Natasha Dusats, Vicki Han, Stacy Wong, Alexandra Isandrella, and Alix Morella in Parliamentary Procedure. For the school, midterms are now over and students are happy that the year is continuing to progress. For the third parting period beginning tomorrow, high school students are looking forward to their second semester classes. And as college decisions continue to pour in for seniors, with the majority of early action and decision, and early decision notifications complete, students are beginning to announce their commitments. Going forward, the next few months hold a lot in store for the high school. From new classes, winter sports championships, spring school board practices, a student faculty basketball game, and a boatload of other events, students are realizing that the best is yet to come.
Are you feeling nostalgic?
We'll see. Not quite.
Not quite?
Okay, just a great report. We've said to Jenny before, even if she's got a basketball game, we expect her to be here. And I noticed you're wearing a Harvard sweatshirt, and you've heard from all of your colleges.
Still waiting.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So many wonderful things in forensics, congratulations on that. Kudos to the bowling team, Morris County champs, that's great, congratulations.
That's a new team, Jim, right? This is their second year.
Got one of their star subbing goalboards here tonight?
Third year.
Third year?
Someone should write a book about our bowling team.
No, it's great, it's a great story. Thank you. No further comment, we'll move right along to the superintendent's floor.
Hi, everyone, good evening. And I want to thank our Hilldale students for being here tonight, our young students, we're thrilled that you're with us. The month of January, school board recognition done, and since we're... Yes, I'm sorry, and with month as well, my apologies. No, it's not okay, I apologize. And although it's, we're not in the month of January anymore, we almost are, since we're a snow day and a half into February now, so... But we do want to continue our recognition of our school board members, and we've asked for there to be a celebration tonight to recognize the wonderful work that they do for our students, our staff members, and our community each and every day. So I'd like to, without further ado, introduce Ed Fleischman. Mr. Fleischman is our supervisor of the arts here in our district, kindergarten through twelfth grade. And he's brought along some special guests with him tonight that he's going to introduce. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Green, Dr. Coralino, members of the institution, parents, family, and friends. We have two very courageous and talented groups of students here tonight. We have a group of orchestra students from Hilldale, led by the Hilldale orchestra teacher, Miss Claire Rockwitz. Miss Rockwitz also teaches orchestra at Mason and Mason Woodmont in Hilldale, as she travels between three schools. And then we have a group of band students from Woodmont, being led by Miss Adrian Scoglio. Miss Scoglio teaches band at Woodmont and also teaches band at the middle school. And I'd also like to acknowledge that we have Mrs. Sisneros here, principal of Hilldale School. Mr. Esposito really wanted to be here tonight. Those of you who know Mr. Esposito, he's a very outgoing fellow, a lover of the arts. He called me eleven-thirty today, coughed me quite badly, he was sick, so he did pull him to my office.
No biddy on to go with that?
Our first group, the Hilldale string group, is going to perform, and I'll let Mrs. Rockwitz introduce the students, but they got to get up there. They're going to perform "Fierile Lira," "Nutcracker," from the Cracker Suite, and we could do it by hand in class.
Good evening. This is the Hilldale Five Plus One, we call ourselves. This is the advanced string ensemble. With fourth grader Eugene Tang, fifth grader Elizabeth I just had it blank. Rich Arski, fifth grader Isabel Lutowski, fifth grader Elizabeth Basunov, and fifth grader Sophia Kuznetzova. And our first piece for you this evening is "Fierile Lira." To go along with the following musical.
Wow. Thank you so much. How often do you practice?
I see them once a week with the schedule, and we practice every Wednesday. So I actually haven't seen them since last week. We were supposed to have a special rehearsal on Monday, but we were practicing at home, thinking it'd be better.
Nice job, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our final piece for you this evening is "Nanprakam March," an arrangement of the Nanprakam March.
Thank you, everybody, that was great.
Next up, we have Miss Scoglio and two of our flute students, and they're going to play an arrangement for the Blues of Carol de Bell. And while we're doing a little changeover, I want to have Pichai and Neil, the great members of our evening staff and evening students here tonight, and I think that would be great for the presentation. My school students here tonight, and I know that by station, many of our high school and middle school performers are very public or concert, we have string musicals, but this is the foundation of our music program, this is where it gets started. So I don't think any band or orchestra corps members at the high school level here tonight, but I imagine if they did, they could integrate with school or something. So without further ado, we're doing a little chat.
This is Daniela Porte and Alyssa Met, they are my two advanced flute students. I have a mix of fourth and fifth graders in the advanced band, in fact, five of them are beginners this year, so I'm very, very proud of them.
I always have dreams of that happening to me at graduation, where my speech falls on the floor and it's out of place.
Take your time.
Remember one time that I was playing an outdoor concert, and the wind came up, and the first guy that lost his music is right there from on up. So the conductor just held it from on up for about thirty seconds, till the guy went down to music and came back to the stand. Technical difficulties.
All right, Mike, I give up, so it's over, Mark.
It's old.
And the rest, if you make sure you have your stick ready. This is our first performance singing up, so we're practicing for jazz fans. Okay, the next lecture we're going to be doing is Winter Wonderland, I think it's still appropriate. And I want to introduce everyone, and I only have to sound, not because I don't know their names, but I don't want to forget anybody. Julia and Ker, Ker, or Care, just correct me, because I have to announce it, I graduated this year. And Ariana Stone, they're fifth grade beginner flute players this year who are doing amazingly well. Varna Alyssa Met and Daniela Porte, Lea Nanti, also first-year permanent player, blowing away my six printers, I have to say. Ali came to us this year, she was awesome on the trumpet. And we have our two saxophone players here, Protham, Julie, and we got a series.
Sinshik Obichanduk.
Thank you. Fifth graders. And Tine, I'm going to say Vaisa Raju. Vaisa Raju, Toshin, see, I got it wrong off ever since you were in school. And he's a fourth grader this year, just starting out this year, and we have Joseph, Scott, and Ethan Lang, great trombone player.
That was awesome, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Great job, everybody. Thank you to our Woodmont and Hilldale parents for coming out tonight and supporting this, we appreciate that a great deal.
Thank you, Mr. Slifman, and thank you teachers and parents. Yeah, that was a nice treat. Thank you very much for the treat.
Okay, we go from the Board of Education recognition and the world of music to PARC testing. It's a sudden switch. So a few things to comment on about PARC testing, which is coming up in March. In the next week or so, I hope to get a letter out to parents, letting them know a few particular situations relating to the PARC testing. This will give the parents links to several websites to get information from the state education department, also from the New Jersey School Boards, who has done a Q and A to give parents information about the testing itself. The part that I will compose will speak to our position having to do with parent opt-outs. And as I've discussed with the board in public before, that if parents do decide to opt-out of testing, children will be given alternative environments, not for instructional purposes, but to make the children comfortable. And in that environment, children will have the opportunity to read for the duration of the tests. The letter will go to all of our district parents, letting them understand the situation as I'm also relating it to the board at this time, and yet also linking it to actual state education information that they can find. There's a related item that's not on the agenda under my remarks that I'd like to speak to, and that is, from time to time, we are asked by the U.S. Department of Education to participate in field testing for the National Assessment of Educational Progress, often just referred to as NAEP. This year is a year when we have been asked to participate in this, and through a process, they select students at random, and this year it's from our 8th grade. They've selected 98 graders to participate in the NAEP. The test is about a 90-minute test. There are no scores that are totally perceived. There's no feedback that we receive from the testing. It's really a field testing opportunity. This is a widely-used test that's used across the country. And the letter will be going home from Terry Hay, our assistant principal at Lizar Middle School, to the 90 families, to the parents of the 90 children who were selected at random to participate. If parents do want to opt-out of that test, it's a very easy process for them to do so, and there are children who replace those children. In other words, if 45 children opt-out from the 90, then the test is only going to be the 45. So that will be explained in the letter. Once again, it's 90 students selected randomly, 8th grade, and parents who have the option to easily opt-out of that testing situation. Sure.
What is the purpose of the testing?
Okay, so... So I'll read you a little bit from the NAEP itself. "We're pleased to notify you that Prophet Lizar Middle School has been selected to represent schools across the nation by participating in the National Assessment of Educational Progress." First was administered in 1969. It's the largest nationally representative in continuing assessment of what students know and do in various subject areas. When you hear about the nation's report card, when you hear those terms, this is the test that's used that gives us those statistics.
That compares us to...
Compares us across the country and to other countries as well. And the information is used for statistical purposes. Only a child's grades will not be affected. A child may be excused from participation for any reason, not required to complete the assessment, and may skip any questions. While it's voluntary, we depend on student participation to provide accurate measures of student achievement that will inform improvements in education. Your child will represent many other students, so participation is very important. However, if you do not want your child to participate, please notify me, Terry Hay, in this case, in writing by Friday, February 13.
Is our district required to participate?
I guess that's questionable. I'm not sure about that. I don't know if you two... I know that, I hope that we can refuse, but again, individual parents can refuse.
How long is the testing?
About 90 minutes.
On one day? Just one day?
I believe it's one day for 90 minutes. There's no studying. There's no reason to prepare for it.
And are there specific content they read, as in, "Are we trying to math?"
I believe those are the two that are tested. I think science as well.
But what happens? Do we get results? What do we do with those results?
We do not.
So in other words, it's 90 minutes out of a teaching day to give a test that we know nothing about because we're requested by somebody?
Well, it's not 90 minutes out of the teaching day because, except for those 90 students, teaching goes on in the other classrooms as usual.
With the 90 students?
Those 90 students would be missing instruction for that day.
I mean, what do we gain from this? I don't know, other than that somebody wants to do a survey.
Well, we don't gain anything particularly for this in terms of our school district. What education gains from this is an opportunity for progress across the country to be measured.
Do we get a report from them after these tests are corrected? Do we get something back from this group, this request?
Well, everyone in the country gets something back from this group, yes. We don't specifically...
So it's a voluntary participation?
For our students it is.
Can I ask, what about the instruction that students will be missing? Will there be, will they be excused from any tests, homework? What happened?
There certainly won't be any consequences for children who miss instruction for testing due to this. And I have confidence that on the day of testing, Lizar would either not be doing any of its own testing, or make sure that any information the students are missing can be made up.
If I could just chime in here, and this is not something that really pleases me, because first of all, we're hearing that the PARC testing and every other standardized testing, all the instruction our kids are missing already, they were considering eliminating things like midterms because we're losing so much instruction time, now just throwing another test and missing more instruction time for the kids. And for what purpose? What's in it for us?
Well, I've shared what the purpose is. You know, if the Board of Education would like us to let the, you know, federal government know we're not going to participate, I'm happy to do that.
So I would like to understand, are, is every school in the country that has an 8th grade, have 90 students been randomly selected from each one of those schools, or were we randomly selected?
I can't tell you that. I can only tell you what the information is that we received, which is that it's the largest nationally representative in continuing assessment of what students know and do in various subject areas. It's been administered at the National Center for Educational Statistics within the U.S. Department of Education. It's different from state assessments because it provides a common measure of student achievement across the country. The results, well, now PARC is only in, I think, about 11 states, 12 states, 10 states, it's changing. The results of NAEP are released by the nation's report card, which provides information about student achievement, educators, parents, policymakers, and the public.
I guess what you're sensing, Paul, is a communal chagrin at yet another national test or statewide test coming through to our students. You're an academic leader, however. Do you feel this is a good idea? If you do, I'll be happy.
Well, I think it's, you know, and we, you know, I can't help but, they're related to another field. So for example, in medicine, there are trials, right, where people are asked to participate in various ways, whether it's for medication, or it's for exercise, and results of those trials are used to hopefully better the entire medical community throughout the country. This is that purpose. This organization's been around since 1969. It uses the results of these trials, if you will, to gauge where we're heading in terms of learning in various subject areas. And if we believe that creating good educational policy is important, hopefully it influences people in the right direction to put policies in place that help. Now, we can debate that, of course, but again, this test has been around a lot longer than PARC, or probably NJAS, and so on and so forth.
Does this test administer it every year? How does it better run?
I believe it is. Do we know it's on the year? It'll be on February 19.
When did they notify us that we had to do this, or not have to do this? Answers.
They did it back in the summer. Back in the summer.
In December.
No, it was the summer.
It's summer.
But this is the notification we've gotten that it's coming our way.
The high school participated a number of years ago, so the number of low grades we slept with this guy a year ago.
If you're a penalty of your own, participate.
It's voluntary for students, but for districts that accept federal one monies, federal monies, there's really not an option to not do it. The only option out there is to do it. The districts are required to answer if you set dollars.
The districts require to give the test because we accept federal dollars.
It's also considered an option.
It's optional for students, but not for...
Students can turn it down.
Right. Students don't have to, we have to. Who chooses the students?
The agency does at random.
So for argument's sake, 45 students choose not to take the only 45 against the test?
That's correct.
Well, it sounds like we don't have a choice unless we want to be penalized federal one money.
Well, it's possibly penalized, of course. You know, you never know what the reaction will be unless you push the organization to that point.
How does the board feel?
I guess we have to do it if I'm unhappy, though.
Well, the parents have opt-out options, correct?
Yes.
That's such a bad timing.
I know the torture, but we can pay it ahead of time. It's going to be given on the 19th. I don't want to take the chance of losing the federal money. I don't know. I have a feeling that I don't want to lose it. Sort of like you're damned if you don't, you lose the money.
Well, I think it's the same situation that the school districts are agreeing with this as with the PARC testing.
Here we get the results. We have the results. Here we get no results.
Well, we get results from a national perspective.
Not our student.
Correct. But the threat of the penalty is in the same vein. In other words, we don't know what would happen if we, as a district, refused to give PARC tests. We can only assume that because the agency would be pushing up against, right, the state education department, United States Department of Education, there could be financial penalties.
Have the 90 students been identified yet?
Yes, they have, I believe.
But they know, they have been notified. Well, I guess what our loud silence means, we'll do it, but we're not happy.
As a parent, I would just ask the lawyer to go out as soon as possible to notify the parents.
Yeah, the letter will go out this week.
Will it tell which periods they will be missing?
Excuse me?
Will the students know which periods they will be missing?
It doesn't appear that way in this letter. We can certainly talk about that.
And there's no guarantee. This could happen next year or the year after. Is this going to be a once-a-decade type of event?
It hasn't been our experience that it is, but it, you know, again, we can't predict how often.
The question I, we could lose federal one money. And the next question was, how much? $100? We don't know. So I would like to know, just, we're going to lose $100 if I have 90 to get that for half a night to get that.
Well, how much federal money do we get?
In reality, federal funding is always tied to something, whether it's money for roads or money for, you get money for roads if you lower your speed limits, or you get money, I mean, federal monies are always tied to, it's not like this is just tied to.
So what do we get in federal money?
Yeah, we have to allocate.
Eight of the agenda actually has, how much money we get in federal account?
I think that's $700,000. It's supposed to be $800,000. We're not $700,000.
For the NCLB grant, it's about $75,000.
$175,000. Look at it, two, one, two, three. But nobody can tell us how much.
Well, and they wouldn't let us know that either until they take action.
Until they tell us we're not getting anything.
They're not in the business of saying, "Well, if you don't do the test, we'll take away $1,000." I mean, they, they're not looking to have you bargain.
No, but I mean, if we knew that ahead of time, that would have been sort of the way I would have done it.
Right, but we would never know that ahead of time.
I don't think we'd ever know unless we tested. I don't think we would do that.
Okay, moving on, just an update on oral language. We did have our town meeting. And out of that town meeting came the creation of a task force to study oral language. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting with the oral language task force and setting out what their goals should be in terms of their study. And then sometime before the end of the year, I expect that they'll be giving a report back to the Board of Education community about those goals. I'll share what those goals are with the Board of Education, once they are developed to the point where they can be shared. And looking forward to the task force students' work. We have co-coach Lisa Howard, our supervisor of oral language, David Tubbs, our supervisor of humanities, and Elise Miller, our supervisor of elementary education. The three of them will chair that committee. And we have a representative group of teachers and parents and students also on that committee with them. Any questions about that? And you saw your packets that we have a change in the budget calendar, looking to push back the adoption by a little bit of time, based on the information that Jim shared, with when he has the responsibility to bring a final budget to the county. So if the board's agreeable with that, we can hopefully stick with the new budget calendar. I know, Jim, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, Dr. Diane, I support.
Question. Those are reflected in the revised 13015?
That's correct. Okay, it's ended by remarks. And next, we have a presentation. Okay, it's ended by remarks, and next we have a presentation. I know, see, Mr. Nasdak is here, representing a high school, and this is our Shop Right Stars, and we have several people who would like to recognize and congratulate this evening. So, Mr. Nasdak, I'll ask you to step forward, and I'll ask Dr. Cordelia to join you with some certificates.
Good evening, and it's a pleasure to present to our Shop Right Stars for the second market period. As you know, students are nominated by faculty and staff on their achievement in one of five categories. This market period, I'm proud to announce the following recipients. In the field of academics, congratulations to Pujan Shaw. The staff member who nominated Pujan said he is dedicated to his academics and takes criticism constructively in an effort to improve his work. Pujan has demonstrated his ability to grow academically by taking AP classes this year for the very first time. He has enrolled in four APs in addition to taking the science research class. Out of the classroom, Pujan continues to stay committed to his academics by participating in FBLA, forensics, and NHS. He emerges as a leader in all of those organizations by assisting his classmates with respect and integrity in the hopes of helping them succeed academically. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Carl Caddan. Carl's been the captain of the bowling team for the past three years and has earned several individual accomplishments. For example, he received top ten honors in the state tournament last year and was top ten in the singles classic at Parkland Lakes. Additionally, he averages 220 in conference and tournament play, which is roughly 219, but I've never bowled in my entire...
You didn't bowl the game, did you, or bowl?
I did.
That's what they had us here.
One in. But the unique thing about Carl is that as big of a star as he is on the wings, or in the wings, he has accomplished, has accomplished in the classroom. Carl has taken ten AP classes during his career in the THS, including five this year. He has also received the above and beyond award at National History Day. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Minky Hong. Minky informed me that he could not be here this evening because of his commitment to the region's orchestra. That sentence in and of itself should tell you everything you need to know about Minky's dedication to the arts, but I'd like to briefly mention a few of his accomplishments. Minky is the concert master of the Monfils Orchestra and leader of the Mendelssohn-Senac Quartet. He made Region One Orchestra in 2011, 2014, and 2015, as well as the All-State Orchestra in 2014, offstage. Minky volunteers at the Chilton Memorial Hospital and Rudolf Robbins Music Therapy Center. He is honored to add Shop Right Stars to his list of accomplishments. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Brittany Davis. Brittany was nominated in several categories, but the selection committee settled on leadership, primarily because that's who Brittany is. When Brittany commits herself to something, she often takes a leadership role. For example, she is recognized as the leader in NHS and the Spanish Honor Society. She is a leader in FBLA, Key Club Relay for Life, and on the Thames Court. She has demonstrated these leadership characteristics throughout her time in the THS and has made our ability in better place because of her contributions. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Stephanie Maggio. Stephanie is truly someone who made the most of her time in the THS, including participating in the Iraq Club, School of Rock, and Italian National Honor Society. In the classroom, Stephanie challenged herself by taking two AP classes in the same year for the very first time, and happy to report that her grades in both are outstanding. She is also involved in sports, playing in the soccer team, basketball team, and was a member of the junior Olympics at track and field. She also played soccer on the Olympic national team. But Stephanie won the star because of, in community service, because of her work with Crop Walk, an organization that fights hunger, Pathways, as a CCD teacher and a soccer referee. There was so much more, but I recently learned a secret about Stephanie that I feel compelled to share. On two separate occasions this year, Stephanie took it upon herself to bake and distribute cookies to everyone in her class, and by that I don't mean social studies and math classes. She made cookies for everyone in her grade, put them in bags, and hung them from their lockers. Stephanie's very selfless and always looks for ways to contribute to our school and community to make them better places. We are all so proud of her for succeeding at both. Again, congratulations.
Um, twelve hundred? I was having an awesome bet.
She, she just told me she had to bake twelve hundred cookies for her class.
Congrats again to all of our award winners.
Congratulations to all of our Shop Right Stars, and I know we'd like to have a picture of you all together, but would you like to have that, that right here? Is that what you'd like? Can our recognition winners please come forward for a brief moment?
Well, and let's not forget, congratulations to the parents and to the families as well.
And this evening, we have one more presentation, and this is our initial presentation for the 2015-2016 school district budget. If the board of ed would prefer to sit somewhere else, they can, but as you can see, it's on two screens, so wherever you're comfortable. So, this budget presentation is entirely developing the Monfils Township Public School Budget for the 2015-2016 school year, and as I've done in the past, our initial budget presentations do not start to talk about the actual dollars, but more about concepts and ideas, and to kind of forecast what lies ahead, and that's what I'll be attempting to do this evening. So, we begin with our mission statement. The Monfils Township Community values education at the highest level. Our mission is to guarantee exceptional education for our students by maximizing individual potential and fostering a lifelong commitment to learning through a strong partnership of educators, families, and community. As we create a vision, we're looking at three areas. Our goal should guide us towards specific outcomes, while bringing us closer to our vision. Schools and departments focus on practices which align with the district vision, and teacher effectiveness and student engagement are the center of our work. Each year, our central office administrators work with our board of education members to create district goals. We do this in four different areas: student learning, communication, human resources, and business practices, and tonight, we will focus only on our student learning goals, but they're certainly most important. And our goals this year included our original science research program, which is now in its third year, so we now have our students who began as sophomores in their senior year in the program, our district mathematics program. We've focused on introducing a new math program, grades six through 12, at our middle school and high school. We looked at a digital remedial learning tool called Alex, the implementation of a math lab at Monfils Township High School, and Math Rocks at Lazard. We also have plans to continue next year in the future with some more revisions to our math program, looking ahead to perhaps bring a math remedial program into place or support program for our students with special education needs. Monfils Township Media Center, long overdue for renovation. We now see that coming to fruition. We have a large comprehensive committee which has been working with architects to bring that initiative forward, and we are on track and on schedule, and we hope that we'll be breaking ground at the very end of this school year in our media center here at the high school, and hopefully by the end of October, we'll be able to open the doors to a new media center, which will truly be at the hub of this high school. A world language program is another area, another area for our goals this year, and as I mentioned earlier, we, through a first at a town meeting, and now through a task force, will be looking at that program. The area of effective teaching and professional development is always at the forefront of our interest, and we have many professional development opportunities. On February 16, we have a district-wide superintendent's conference day, where our students will be, or as teachers, I should say, will be involved in learning activities throughout the day. The area of special education is an area that we looked at this year with regard to compliance, making sure that our IEPs are closely followed, and that the collaboration between our special education teachers and regular education teachers is strong, and finally, the effect of school culture on students. At a recent board of education meeting, the board approved the opportunity for us to get involved in the YEA through, through the efforts of United Way, thank you, through the United Way, who will be bringing us the opportunity for improving the climate and culture within our schools, first through a survey, which will be given next October in all of our schools, and then through planned activities to foster the development of positive school culture within our seven schools. So, in terms of what can we value, excellence, of course, a passion for learning, collaboration, and a caring environment. So, as we look at the big picture with regard to budgeting, these are the things that we find, of course, a 2% maximum increase in the tax levy. We have had some unexpected expenses during this current, the 2014-15 school year. We already know of some projected expenses going forward for the 2015-2016 school year. Over the past three years, we've had very valuable increases in staffing and programs, a variety of innovations that have come forward, that we can be very proud of, but as we look at next year, we're looking more to maintain our staffing and programs with limited enhancements, and this is based upon those unexpected increases that we have had this year, and some areas that we know we're going to have to fund for next year. I'll explain a little bit more about those in just a moment. So, these are the areas of impact as we look ahead to next year. In the area of special education, this year, we have approximately $1 million worth of unbudgeted expenses in that particular area. While I won't get into, again, a lot of specifics, I will say that the rise in this has mostly occurred due to students moving into our district and being identified for special services, which they're entitled to. Much of this has occurred through our preschool students who are in needed services. Approximately, I'd say approximately nine children fall into that area of preschool out of district services, which results in close to that million dollar figure. We also have several other out of school district placements, again, all adding up to more than $1 million. So, that's the big picture of special education increases this year. We also know that as we look ahead to next year, we foresee an increase of four special education teachers at our high school. This is a result of the fact that this year presently, we have been able to secure a variety of waivers for classes that are actually over the maximum amount, and we would not be able to do that again, and we also have several other classes already at the maximum. So, we know that this adds up to an increase in special education staffing at our high school. At Lazard Middle School, our teach, special education teachers at Lazard Middle School are teaching six periods of special education classes a day. This has been the status quo for many, many years, teaching six periods, but in fact, all of our teachers, both regular and special education, and all of our other schools, middle school and high school, only teach five periods, and we have been approached to understandably so, for their schedules to also go down from six periods to five. This affects many, many teachers, and we're looking to judge the impact of what that's going to mean at the middle school for us as we bring teachers from six to five periods, and what the financial impact of that is going to be. We're working with the Monfils Township Education Association, and I want to commend them for their thoughtfulness through this process, as we talk to them about the... them for their thoughtfulness through this process as we talk to them about the impact and how we can collaborate together to try to minimize the financial impact in one year and bring a resolution to the situation. In the area of ESL services, we see our population is going up a little bit, but we don't think it's going to have a strong impact, or we believe that we might be moving from a, taking one of our teachers from a .6 to a full-time position. We have a variety of program renewals that we want to see continue. We have some newly revised curriculum writing to still take care of. Of course, there'll be technology proposals, some of these having to do with the potential enhancement of the humanities research program, which might need more Chromebooks. We have athletic equipment that we would like to purchase related to both safety and to the new turf fields. Again, we don't feel it's a major expense, but the Board will remember, we did a study, if you will. We looked into the research having to do with football helmets, wanted to make sure we had the very best we could have, and we have done that research, and so we're going to make sure that every one of our football helmets isn't that A or highest five, is it, the highest five-star category? So we will open up next football season, you know, with that in place, and that will have a small budget impact. And we do have some lighter equipment for our fields in terms of our new turf fields to bring out there. Then in terms of instructional programs, some enhancements in particular content areas, including ELA math, social studies, and science, the YEA, the youth empowerment alliance we spoke about before, and some textbook additions that are necessary for our classes. So these are the areas of impact, and I'll be more specific with numbers as the budget process continues. So as I mentioned during this past slide, we have staff and considerations as a result of these initiatives: special education, the high school, and Cedar Hill, we're still looking at carefully as maybe needing a potential special education teacher there. We do have particular stipends at the high school. We have ESL services, I mentioned, a slight increase. Talked about special education at Lazard, the teaching load going from six periods to five. We do need an additional chemistry teacher at the high school, the Board will recall that. For the first time, we did offer biology at the ninth-grade level, a very, very important initiative that we put in place, very popular with our students and parents, and I think one very well worthwhile. And now we'll feel the impact of that initiative as more students are taking chemistry. So we believe we'll need an additional chemistry teacher at the high school. And the other thing I will share with the Board at a future meeting is elementary class size. Again, as I look at our elementary class size numbers, and the Board will recall, we had a conversation last year about this, it looks to me that there could be three different places where we could reduce elementary staffing. So in fact, decrease elementary staffing by three positions, which obviously will be a financial savings to us as we look to increase in the other areas I've mentioned. The Board will have to look at that, those numbers. I will share them with you. Certainly, I understand our community members may have interest in that conversation as well, but I see three different places where we can in fact decrease elementary staffing by three collectively throughout the five schools. So the instructional budget, that are children, their passion for learning, looking at effective teaching, instructional practice, looking at more authentic teaching and assessments that go along with that, professional development of the purpose, and curriculum development. And of course, we want to maintain our reputation for excellence in the county and towards the state, and moving forward, maintaining excellence while becoming a district of distinction. The other thing I'd like to do is, we start to unveil our budget presentations going forward, is not just look at next year, but also look at the following year, when in fact, we might be more financially able to bring additional programs to the district, and some ideas that I have as a result of our interest in world language, and in some other areas, I'd like to get out there some ideas for the 2016-17 school budget that you might consider as you move forward. Okay, so that brings us to questions and comments. So perhaps the Board would like to return to the board table, and I believe that after the Board has an opportunity, Dr. Cortolino might be more interested in opening that to the community as well.
Mike?
I just want to start, thank you, Dr. Free, for the presentation. I'm saying this not to try to, completely not trying to stigmatize any part of the population or anything, I'm only saying it because we've heard lately rumbles from others, from perhaps municipal bodies about why, implying that maybe the Board should be cutting its expenses to lower taxes. When you have a million-dollar, unbudgeted special education in one year, that's, these are the type of things that prevent us from just saying, okay, we're going to lower your taxes. Look, everybody back here pays taxes, we pay the same taxes you do, nobody likes paying taxes. But, and it's just reckless for some people outside this room to be, you know, making almost accusations that we should be lowering spending and lowering taxes. There's some things you can control, some things you can't control, and these are the things we have to address. So I think it's important that the public just understand why we can't just wave a magic wand and say, okay, we're going to cut the budget by X, 100% lower taxes. Wish we could do it, but some years you just can't, and when you have extraordinary expenses like we've had this year, I think it just prevents it. I just wanted to make that clear, and that's it.
Is there any interest or any possibility of discussions with the state? Special ed budgets keep going up, a lot of other townships are feeling the pinch, they're looking for ways to save money. Special ed services are things that can cost a district a considerable amount of money unexpectedly, as we're finding out. Is there any way to discuss with the state, them taking over some of those costs, or somehow getting the state just to take over special ed period for all the students throughout the state?
Yeah, I suppose there's always a way to try to address the situation, and probably would be better done collectively, whether it's through school boards or through the superintendent's association that I belong to, as opposed to one district reaching out to them. But I do believe they've heard concerns before. You know, concerns that connect with both special education and the 2% tax levy cap ultimately make it difficult for school districts to, you know, to maintain their current structures. You know, I want to be clear that we strongly believe that the children we're talking about need and deserve these services. So this isn't about targeting or looking to blame a group of students for, you know, high costs. But to give you an example, an out-of-district placement for a preschool child is approximately $94,000. And as I mentioned, we have approximately nine of those that came to us after the budget was developed. So that causes an expense that we didn't have any foresight into in terms of our budgeting process. And as you mentioned, this happens to districts, you know, across the state. But it is something to think about, I think, you know, at a school board's level, on a superintendent's level, and so on.
You may remember that New Jersey school boards conducted almost a year-long study with a task force that came out recently, well, in the past six months or so, with the results of the task force findings. When you look through the bulletin items, what that represented their recommendations, you know, in particular, it was a task force for special education cause, we do almost everything that they recommend, but they also recommended some sort of either greater state participation or regionalizing, regionalization of special education services. Legislators are aware that this is an issue, particularly under the 2% cap, but, you know, it's a very sensitive issue. And as Dr. Free points out, the children need the services. It's a question of which, you know, how to be for it in times where our budget is capped at 2%. I mean, ideas are floating like, you know, exempting special education cause from the 2% cap, but, I mean, so far, there's lots of discussion, David, there's just, there's no action taken yet.
No, I agree that the students definitely deserve an education, there turns out about that. I was just looking at ways to suggest to the Board that maybe we can contact other boards, maybe, again, there would be more pressure put on the state to help themselves.
I think, I think too, David, is that the special ed private schools, their increases have been going crazy, and there's now legislation which will sort of lower those increases tremendously. I know a couple of years, we brought back youngsters because we had space and we were able to develop our own in-house programs, and I'm sure you're looking at that also to enable us, besides the tuition, it's also the transportation costs that we would save and provide a much better program, we hope. So special ed is a problem, but hopefully they're looking at containing the cost of these special ed, where we get a 2% tax increase and they're charging 12% more, plus they're hitting you for audited figures from two years ago, which is looney tunes. And as you know, one big one out of Somerset County that was closed up. The owner and his wife and his daughter were all making big bucks, and the state just said, so they're looking at it because it's just going crazy.
I know it's as bad as the insurance, health insurance.
Yeah. The other thing too is that, I know that since I saw there that we might have some room available in the elementary schools, and I know that we have the prepaid classes, I know you're probably looking at seeing if we can bring some of those youngsters in-house, which would provide a better program, we hope, for them.
One of the, one of the things I hope to do as I talk about this 2016-17 school year is try to provide some ideas about special education going forward, as Charlie's mentioning, ways to, and it unfortunately is going to take longer than between now and September to develop something like this, but I'll share some of the information with you, but I think given more planning time, we stand a good chance to be able to lower some costs in the way Charlie's referring to.
The one, not good side, if you will, the larger our special ed costs are this year, we do file an extraordinary aid application shortly, and last year we did quite well. And I assume this May-June will do much more better because our costs for this year are much higher. It's a weird way of looking at it, but that's just a side effect, but we have to look at special ed cost containment more than anything. That's the percentage of the budget that's going out, like it used to be health benefits, but now with the teachers paying part of their health benefits, and the state, you know, we went to the state plan, so those benefits are not going up near as much as special education. And it's not just unique to us, it's just unique to all districts.
Mr. Grous, last point is exactly what I was going to mention, was extraordinary aid. I mean, there isn't mechanism in place. The problem with extraordinary aid is it's, you can't rely on it. It's not like your regular state aid that's relevant.
They can't rely on that either.
That's a good point. This is even more on the line, but we did very well, and it is going to help us cover that deficit that we're experiencing in term 15-16 school year, and we're going to do that through these facilities, through the Jobbies.
And another question, and it's really not on the budget, but you hit the highlights for the library and media renovation, and indicated hopefully we'll be breaking ground soon as schools close. I know Karen and I are on that committee, and I don't know if the rest of the Board members have seen anything regarding what the proposed library renovations are going to look like. I know there's a meeting tomorrow, and I'm just wondering, is there any plans to have the architect come and show the Board what they're getting for a million, two, three, four, whatever the heck the amount is that we have? Just to show them, because I know we have to approve the plans to be sent down to Trenton. And again, we don't want to wait too long on that either, if possible, because Trenton has a reputation of not moving very quickly. But I just, I know for my seven colleagues, it's something that we've talked about for two years, three years maybe, and, you know, I think that they should be afforded the opportunity, if they want, to see exactly what we're doing, and I think they'll like the new building that's going to be on the back parking lot, you know.
Yeah, probably the last meeting that...
I'm sorry?
At the last meeting, they talked about doing the presentation to the Board.
I wonder what changed, I couldn't make it.
Yeah, I think it might be the first or, maybe the second meeting of, actually, maybe, our next meeting, actually.
Okay, so it would be then on the 17th?
Yeah, the last, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing it because we don't want to lose three, four, five, well, we're not going to be able, the library is September as is, but we want to be able to move as soon as we can.
Yeah, and there's another meeting tomorrow, so don't check that.
Mr. Remind me, be.
Based upon, I'm sorry.
Just being a giver.
Based upon your development of the budget, we're very fortunate that we've been saving over time for the media center, and we're very smart, that million dollars away. Just to put numbers in perspective generally, I wanted to ask you a very approximate number. We keep on hearing the term 2% cap. Can you give us some big approximation, one whole unit, of what the 2% cap is for Monmouth?
Sure, it's roughly 1.2 million, somewhere between the $30 or 2% of the local tax level, roughly.
So what do we get, about 60 million in taxes from the county?
That's correct.
So 2%, about 1.2%, 2%. Any rumors on state aid, if anything, and you guys have heard anything?
Well, I have our business administrator's roundtable tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, hoping to hear something from the county school business administrator. I'm not going to hold my breath.
When do we typically hear?
In the February.
Who knows?
Yeah.
With the governor the way it is, who knows?
And of course, as we've talked about a number of times over the last four, five years, we've, based upon the way things were back in 2010, we've lost our district over $10 million already.
A few months back, yeah.
We have been fortunate during the last four years, I guess since Paul has been here, he came in the first year, we had the budget cut by almost a million dollars, and during the next four years, three years, whatever, we've been able to reinstate all, if not more, than the positions from supervisor administrative, they were eliminated. So that's good. Now, as one of the slides indicated, now you have to maintain them, and that becomes the front part, but I think it's a preliminary thing, and once we get more information, it will be very nice to look at.
But are there any other questions on the Board? Is there anyone in the public that has any questions on the budget presentation? Ask your question. This is about the budget?
This is about park, the procedure.
Yeah, this is just about, we're going to get to that.
Yeah, park, Ruby, this is just about, we're going to get to that in a second. It's just about the budget presentation. Okay. You might be there already. Any business administrators report?
Not seen.
Are there any committee reports? Any delegate liaison reports?
I have a brief one from Lazar. I attended the first Lazar meeting of the year and there was, among other things, some detailed discussion by the administration about the park testing, the dates, the way it's going to be administered, so forth and so on, in that particular building. So there was some information provided at that time. If parents have any additional questions, they should call the school administration to clarify that. That was at Lazar, that was at the Lazar PTC meeting, the last, the first meeting of the year. And I did attend the Lazar concert. Oh, our supervisor, the performing arts just left. It was a great concert, not just because my bass player at home was in the concert, but it was a lot of fun and it was, it's always gratifying to see the hard work of the music staff, the teaching staff, and what they do with such young players and how much fun. Ms. Ziyak actually had 120 students singing at one point. I didn't, I didn't understand how she was going to fit them all on that platform that they had, but they all did a fantastic job. So that was always a lot of fun, I always liked going to those concerts. Oh, and Mike was there too.
Of course, Mike, of course.
I have the same thoughts. As long as we're talking about committee reports, I just want to mention that this Friday night, DAC is sponsoring a game night at Lazar. I think it's, it's going to be in the cafeteria, I think it starts about time like six.
Six o'clock.
Okay? This coming Friday. Again, my source, Mr. Johnson, happens to be on DAC. So they've got a little duty there.
What kind of game is it?
In honor of National Drug Facts Week, which was actually the very last week of January, the DAC is putting together a fun trivia challenge. That will encompass all general knowledge questions from history, science, and pop culture, as well as some parts of their curriculum in how the drug and alcohol awareness. It's open to all students and should be a great deal of fun.
Sounds like, thank you. Any other, Mike?
Okay, on committees for liaisons.
Well, we were on liaisons, but whichever of the three you'd like to...
I didn't tell whether that was a liaison.
Yeah, that's okay. Whichever you'd like to speak to, but it's still...
Okay, I was thinking of this on budget, but I pelted to hear it. The must-say meeting is tomorrow night, okay? And since last month's meeting, our business administrator has provided the information to answer last month's questions. But I know that at that meeting a month ago, there was, you know, a wish list presentation. So am I correct in assuming that under the heading of various impact, the principal, the athletic director, because I know they're coming, will be able to answer questions about what's included, no longer wish, but what's included in our budget under athletic safety related to deals and so on. So they have to, they have to do this for one night.
So the way the budget process works is that under the athletic area, Paul Piquatello would get input from coaches, from parents, from the must-say association, he would hear their input. He would then make a decision about what he wanted to try to include in his budget. Once that's there, we as the central office have to make a decision about what things we're going to bring forward to actually place in the budget.
Okay, so they're not ready to, what was that, tomorrow?
We wouldn't know what that is at this point. We're still, you know, Jim's still in the process of putting a lot of pieces of the puzzle together. So what you saw in my presentation tonight was to try to, I guess, lower expectations, so to speak, right? To manage them a bit as we think about this budget process. I'm hoping that, you know, the present programs we have will stay in place and maybe we can enhance some things. But how all the pieces fit together, it's too early to tell.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Any other delegate liaison reports?
The Morris County meeting last week, I don't, you probably didn't report on that. I thought it was the best meeting that I've seen so far. It had such a mixture of topics and information. I thought it was a great meeting, the CER students there, hearing the presentation, you know, finances and so on. I thought it was a very good meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I, I heard that from a number of people.
Karen, can you, for those who don't know, can you just briefly describe what...
Yeah, yeah. Well, Morris County School Board Association is the county association, it's a branch of New Jersey School Board Association, which every school district in the state belongs to, and every county has their own association. So at the January 29th meeting, the meeting that Mike refers to, we had the pleasure and distinction of having our keynote presentation be by Dr. Paul Freed and Mr. James Tevis. And we did a present, it was actually an encore presentation, because they did the same presentation last year at about this time. It was on school finance and budget development. And they really know how to engage the crowd. The crowd is very interested in how we develop our budget. Dr. Freed starts out with our, really how our budget is student achievement driven. And then Jim talks about our, kind of the nuts and bolts of how we develop the budget in real time. And lots of good questions. And so I just wanted to acknowledge to both of you and tell them thank you for being there. It was very well received. A very exciting feature of that night was on our, on our agenda, we have a section called Good News in Sharing. And this is a point in the program where school districts throughout Morris County, they let me know in advance, have an opportunity to showcase a special program in their school from school districts that have an AP Challenge, school districts that honor graduating seniors who are going into the armed services. We saw a robotics presentation at our last meeting. In this meeting, we were able to show off our original science research program students. And they absolutely floored the group. This is a group of school board members throughout Morris County. And to hear them talk about nano, nano something or other to cure cancer and microscopes and rockets, just hand transplants, post-traumatic stress disorder, these kids are just amazing. And the mouths were dropping of those school board members who were listening to them and they just, a lot of excitement in the room after they were finished. It was just a wonderful, wonderful presentation. I want to thank Mr. Hensel for, and of course, Sal Zar for allowing the students to come on last Thursday night. I would also mention that recently, New Jersey School Boards has put together a program, an initiative, that's called A Plus Ideas Programs and Practices. And they kind of stole the idea of Morris County School Boards Association. It's basically an online collection of the successful programs that are now in place in public schools. And I'm very proud to announce to you that our original science research program will be catalogued as one of the very first programs to go online with the New Jersey School Boards, on the New Jersey School Boards website. So they're gathering information and so we'll, we'll have statewide attention with the program.
Yes, Karen, I just want to very quickly say, Mike, I echo your, your comments. I actually pulled up as, as you've got, Dr. Freed and Mr. Tevis were answering questions. I've seen your presentation before and, and watching the attentiveness of the audience was something very special because these are coordinators from other communities, school board members, even centers there, quite spectacular, the two of you have done such a wonderful job representing our district. Thank you. And then on top of that, to see the, the engagement of the students in that program, there are 16 or so. They all spoke without scripts. They, one after another, had just wonderful, flowing and very understandable things to say. It was, as Mike said, a very special moment for Montpel. There have been a handful of moments, as the board member of six years, where I felt just a glowing pride for our district. This was one of those moments. It was a very special night. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Karen. And Mr. Hensel and Ms. Sal Zar too.
Could I comment just a tiny bit more now that we're on a roll here? First of all, the questions, I have found as an educator, that the quality and number of questions are reflections of the quality of the presentation. And the presentation was followed by so many questions. I, I almost felt as if someone were saying, gee, why don't the administrators and artists turn and tell us some of these things? That's how good the questions were. And then as far as the young people, as they spoke, and as you said, they didn't speak from scripts or anything, the mixture of knowledge, interest, and even humor, often in presentations, showed a, a quality and a maturity on the part of the students that really made you proud, you know, not just for the parents being there, but as if to say, oh, yeah, this is the kind of students we have, yeah, these are us, yeah. Because it was just such a good, I can't believe the way they could feel the questions and keep the audience interested and add the humor and so on. It was, it was really, really some presentation. That's, that's it.
Any other reports? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Is Ruby still here? Any questions on the agenda? Okay? Just an ask. Yes?
Thank you also very much for, for giving a lot of the opportunity to the students and they, they are great. It's that easy to teach them, so it's, it's a great experience. Appreciate it.
Well, you know that teachers are the most important tool, in fact, the most effective, most important tool in the classroom is teacher. So thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thanks. And speaking of, I had to miss that day. I just became a new uncle, so...
Congratulations.
Yeah, so that's all I was about Thursday.
Hey, go Grizz. My hat's in the other room. Grizz.
Did you have a question on the agenda?
No, no, just like you said, public items. I just wanted to show if I present something to the board.
We have a second, a second public participation? This is just for agenda items?
No, no.
Okay. We won't, we'll get there real soon.
No, no, no problem.
Anything from negotiations that anybody wants to report right now? Before I ask for a motion to move the agenda items, I just want to point out for the public that the addendum item contains a, a contract award for a superintendent, a superintendent search consulting firm. So first step that we're reluctantly taking and finding a replacement for Dr. Freed is leaving us and Jim. So, motions for J to O, including the addendum? Go. Second. And any questions on J? K?
I have a question on K9, the consultant just mentioned.
Yes.
I'm just clearing my mind, I know when we interview, it's my understanding that the board members will have access to all of the applications that have been filed for Montpel for which we're paying the fee for. And I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss that point. I just don't want to be given five applications I want to see. And I think that's what the consultant said last night, did he not?
He did.
Okay.
The one that says doesn't present to us will be redacted of their personal information, but we have access to it.
I don't even know why they have to be redacted. Because like, we're paying the fee, we should be able to look at them.
Any other questions on K? N, and O. Okay, we'll call. I actually have a question, I'm sorry. Julie? Regarding the addendum?
Which one from L?
Regarding the, one of the items on the addendum? The tuition, the, the change to the tuition reimbursement? Is that a section? No, that's not on the addendum. Okay. But which, you know? I was looking at the more government. Ah, apologies.
That $18,000 does include travel expense, right?
Yes, sir, it does. It's all the...
$2,000, something?
Correct, about $2,000 for that. Then there's a criminal background check on a final candidate. And there was another, the advertising...
Bunch of $12,000 basically, plus the down.
That's correct.
Says for not, not to see.
Yeah, I, I still put the gentleman today, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Is it O B?
Yes.
Mr. Grouse? Yes, on everything except K9. I vote no on K9. I think the other firm, I would have supported, I'm not supporting this firm. I'm not voting for it. Mr. Johnson?
abstaining on K dot four dot J. Yes to all.
Dr. Murgat?
Yes, to all.
Mr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? Dr. Kane?
Yes, to all.
And Dr. Portolino?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Any other, any additional reports?
Just a comment, if I may, about the process. I know that we've, we've struggled with the fact that, you know, we're losing our superintendent and we had to make a decision about what firm to choose and so on. But I don't want to speak, but I'll, I'll speak for myself, but I said, can't speak for the board. The impression I get, just for public information, public board, is that we are effectively now full speed ahead. We are, am I correct, that we are going to make a great effort with the firm that we, that has prevailed in the discussions, to meet a schedule and to do the best thing for the district, you know, in spite of the loss that we have.
Absolutely, Mike. You've gotten the right impression. We have an ambitious timeline of having a new superintendent in place by July 1st. But we will not compromise the position. We won't accept someone that the board believes is not up to the task just to fulfill a timeline. If necessary, although we don't look forward to doing so, but if necessary, if a qualified candidate doesn't emerge in, by the July 1st deadline, then we will be forced to consider an interim position for the length of time that it takes us to find someone who we believe deserves to be the superintendent of Montpel Township Schools.
Thank you.
I just would like to, we received two thank you notes that I would like to read. Dear members of the, of our Montpel Board Education, we are grateful to you for all the hours you voluntarily spent with the improvement of our schools. Thank you for all of your efforts on our children's DAP. Best regards, Montpel Township High School PTC Executive Board, and it names the individuals who sit on that, on the executive board of the Montpel Township High School PTC. We received another card. Dear Dr. Portolino, Dr. Kane, and all members of the Montpel Board Education... Dear Dr. Portellino, Dr. Kane, and all members of the Montpel Board of Education, on behalf of our students and parents, we'd like to thank you for the time and dedication you put into guiding our district. We appreciate it. Kind regards, LaZara PTC Executive Board. I imagine this, we received these cards in response to the fact that January was school board's recognition month, so I would like, on behalf of the board, to thank the LaZara PTC and the Montpel Township High School PTC for taking the time to send us thank you notes. And the board has seen them, and I'll ask that copies be made and distributed to the board, but I wanted to get them out, read them as soon as possible. So, thank you.
So I was asking...
Are you getting monthly now?
I was asking Mr. Johnson earlier tonight, our newest board member, if he was told when he decided to become a board member that this was a thankless job. It's not, see?
See? Yeah, thank you guys. And the other thing I want to bring to the board's attention, our newest member, Michael Johnson, brought to my attention the fact that the P Club is sponsoring a volleyball tournament on February twentieth, I believe?
Twenty or the nineteenth. That Friday.
Yeah. So the twentieth, and they're in need of teams. Is the board interested?
I go, but I don't know.
Are we supposed to make our own team from this group?
Yeah, it would be the board of education.
I think we better pull in some administrators. I'd say right now.
If it helps your decision, I'm told the theme this year is Disney. So all teams would have to be Disney themed. Now, depending on whether or not you have a good sense of humor, there is a wonderful collection of Disney villains, my personal favorite. And playing off of the fun name, the board of dread might be a nice addition. Volleyball line.
Are you sure we have work to come?
So what do you say? We've been challenged. I think we have to do it.
We played the township committee one year.
We, we won.
Oh, did we?
So that, yeah, I hear it resounding. Yes, let's do this.
Yeah.
Okay. But can we bring in, let some young ring strikers to help us with this? Casey, Andrea? It's board of education and family. All right, so Michael, would you make that happen?
I'll reach out. I'll reach out with this.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So now I'm going to open it up. If there are any more comments, I'll open it up to the public for anything you'd like to talk to us about. Yes, your turn. Thank you for your patience.
I'm Angelo Horassis, at Fort Gabor Court. I'm here for one issue that actually started in November. On the week of November seventeenth, I'm an avid runner and a bit of talent and a whole lot. I was running, I've run for the past thirty years, and I was running through the community park and continued on with the high school property. And as I passed the circle, somebody yelled at me, I don't remember who the person was, that I was not allowed on school property. So that was very odd, so in my head, I was like, what are they talking about? And I said, I don't care. So, but as I continued to run, this person in their car followed me off school grounds, down Drury Road, and mostly down Britney, and I noticed they were behind me like, you know, a hundred yards. And so I stopped, and as I got past the bridge there on Britney, I cut through the grass, and so they couldn't follow me, and I went home. No, no, no harm, no foul, like, why is this person following me? So I continued on my way for the next couple of weeks. And I was running through the school grounds again on December fourth. This person pulled up next to me, the same person, and said I wasn't allowed on school grounds. I asked him who they were, they wouldn't tell me who they were. They said they wanted to call the police. They called the police. They, I continued to run off school property. They followed me for two miles, next to me with their car, till the police caught up with me. They, the police stopped. Yeah, I said that I was a township resident, I said yes. So, the person also told the police that I, they had told me multiple times not to be on school property, and was stopped, you know, once. And I explained to the police that, you know, I'm an avid runner, I'm a national level, I won a national championship a couple of years ago in track and field. And I do need, do use the track when I can, in the morning before work, because I work late, generally. And so they said, you know, I contact the board, and I spoke with Dr. Freed, and he suggested to present this issue to the board. And, you know, one big concern is like, this person following me, you know, off school grounds, and I, and I asked them to identify themselves, and they, they wouldn't tell me their name or who they were. But also, is the access to the, you know, school facilities, you know, by township, you know, resident, and some of these facilities are not available in other, other parts of town, like the track and the tennis courts and whatnot. And I know there's, I spoke to Dr. Freed's office, Patty was amazingly responsive, got me the statutes that, you know, the board has put through like five years ago, referencing to school property and to the buildings, which is, and I read them, and they seem to focus on access to the buildings and if somebody's in the building disrupting, they should remove, et cetera. And I also asked for, you know, where, is there any signs posting, you don't have access to the property? And she said yes, but I asked whether there was one, where there was a sign, and she said she couldn't tell me, but she said she's passing the information she was given. So, you know, I brought this up to Dr. Freed, we had a few conversations. Thank you very much, he's very responsive. And he suggested I present this to the board. And, and he also did discuss with the security committee, and, and they did not think it was wise to make an exception for me. And I asked, I don't think that's wise either, just to address the issue with the community as a whole, because there's, you know, several, several issues here, you know. Somebody following me, following a township resident, very close with their car, and not, and when they're asked to identify themselves, they wouldn't. And then also access to the, to the track or other facilities during school hours. You know, I suggested, because I've checked, you know, there's other township that do have the same restrictions, that they, they, they ask that, they have a sign in at the office, so they know who's on the property at all times, because this is a security issue. And everybody discussed with Dr. Freed, he expressed that dissecurity issue, and I said, somebody running on the track is a very small issue compared to some of the other issues at the high school. My door goes to high school, my pickup are off a little before seven o'clock in the morning, and the back door, anybody can walk in at any time. It's open, so that's a, you know, a security concern. If you're worried about somebody running on the sidewalk, you know, a hundred yards from the school, what about somebody just walking right into the school and who knows what? And also, at the school, you know, they buzz you in the front, but once you walk in, they don't make sure you sign in, and, and they don't make sure you sign out either. So, you walk into the school, you can just walk around the school, nobody says anything to you. Even though they buzz you in, what's the point? You know, they buzz everybody, and they don't, you know, they don't check anything. So there's several security concerns that have to be, you know, if we're putting on security, you know, let's be serious about it, not, you know, worry about some old man or somebody, you know, running on the sidewalk, you know, outside the school. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that point up, and, you know, let's be reasonable about what we're trying to accomplish here.
So you did have a conversation with Dr. Freed and...
Yes, and he wanted me to present it to the board, because he didn't want me to give a live decision.
But specifically with the deficiencies, as you described, was the back door open and the school buzzer? Dr. Freed said he would be looking into that and handling that, I imagine.
Okay, well, he wanted me to present, you know, make notes of board, so I...
So, we have a couple remarks.
Yeah.
We spoke several times about, about Mr. Horassis's concern, and the timing of it was such that I was able to present it to the Safety and Security Committee. Mr. Morell is our chair of that committee. And I just wanted to get an opinion from that group, since it's a board committee. And I shared with, with you that, based on policy, based on the field of our Safety and Security Committee, we had, I believe, Chief Appleton, who was actually in the room at the time, because we had a, and so all of our building principals, we had a pretty elaborate, well-represented meeting at that moment. Our feeling was that it was a safety and security issue, and that, as had been the case, we would continue to not allow people during school hours, right, to be present on school grounds, not just in the building for no reason, but on school grounds as well. So, when you asked, well, what's my recourse? I said, well, your recourse, then of course, is to bring it to the board's attention, because from my perspective, right, we weren't allowing you to, to use the facility. So that's how you got to be here.
Yes.
Tonight to, to talk about it to the broader audience. And you did share with me about the back door, and I did tell him I would look into those issues, of course.
Well, naturally, because those issues are, would be most concerning to the board at this moment in time, is to know that they're being taken care of. But are you, is it, are you asking us to relax the policy?
Well, that also, but also the security concern at the high school. I dropped my door off this morning at, well, it has to be probably at nine o'clock, because two are in the night, and, you know, nobody's back there, the kids just walk in, anybody can just walk in. I'm just nipping out there, so...
Is that the high school?
The high school, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
My back department, but actually, we've gotten a lot of, right? But as far as the policy, you know, I mean, there's no other facility, you know, in town, so basically, if a township resident can't go on the track at six o'clock, six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, till eight o'clock, then I have to, I mean, I have to go to another town to use their track, I mean, that's...
Can I, can I interject on this?
Yes.
My background, I'm actually a police lieutenant in the township of West Orange. I was in the schools for thirteen years. I was considered a school resource officer. The problem that you have is that, it actually is not even just a board policy, it's also state statute. It's considered under two C, it's a criminal code. If some, now, you mentioned that signs not posted, it's a possibility that it's not. Whether it's posted or not, it's still considered trespass, and honestly, you're supposed to be arrested for it, for anybody going on school grounds, without any consent or without permission from the school board. Without the signs being posted, it's considered defiant. With signs being posted, it's considered criminal trespass, which is a fourth degree. So, my recommendation to you is, is that even if the board wished to even move policy or waive the policy for you, we can't waive criminal, criminal code. That's the problem.
Running on the track for thirteen years.
I understand that, and you figured it as a free passion, as thirteen years.
Nobody said anything to me, ever. I mean, even during school hours, gym teachers, teachers out there, they never said anything. I mean, my dad, who's eighty, but he goes to track and walks a little bit.
And during off-hours, as the school said, it's totally fine.
Eleven o'clock, you know, one o'clock.
To be quite honest with you, the school actually, actually take the stance that they don't want anybody on the grounds, which they don't want to do, because they want it to be an open type of thing for, for the public. But the fact of the matter is, is that during school hours, you have to, you have to stay stringent with it, because with society today, you can't take chances. Not to say that you're going to go and do anything, but then who's to say that we, somebody else is not going to come along and want to utilize that loophole to do things in a bad way? So, I would, my personal opinion, and that's just me being a police officer and being in the schools for thirteen years, my, I mean, I can't see us getting leeway in that type of fashion for you to go running on the track.
Could I ask a question or two? Now, I'm not a police officer or an attorney, but I am an emeritus parking lot duty bicycle guy. And, so I just, just want to know now, let's say ten years ago, was that in effect?
Absolutely.
So, all senior citizens, and there were dozens and dozens of them, who were allowed to come to the track and walk that track, I mean, we could watch it, and students went out, you know, a bunch that maybe took them, they were in violation of the law.
In actuality, yeah.
Why aren't they in jail? Why, why aren't those people? I'm shocked.
Yeah.
I am shocked. And that's because of my ignorance of the law. So you're saying that even senior citizens, it doesn't matter who it is, it might be a five-year-old, that's walking on that track from the hours of...
The school hours.
Seven thirty to two twenty.
In actuality, it's twenty-four hours, but because of, you want to do this to create a protection for the kids. So if the kids are, whenever the kids are present...
Right, when kids are present.
So that includes games, practices, and everything. Right, as long as they're invited on for an event, that's fine. If they're not, I'm just learning. Right, no, and I understand that. A lot of people don't know. But the, the fact of the matter is, is that under, under the two C code, it's, it's actually against the law to be doing it. And also, through the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, well, it was, just so we know, it was well-known, it was common, and it was, went on for years and years, okay, with, with people not making issue, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I don't have a position on this. All I'm saying is that I too, taken by surprise with some of this.
I think, I think it's fair to say to kind of bring this to a close.
But I don't know what he said, though. In expansion, what he said is, maybe I'm never allowed on the track unless I have it fucking invited, because it's twenty-four hours.
In actuality, it can be construed to be that, I guess.
Yeah, so I, so basically, it's not available to anybody at any time, based on the law.
If you're there during school hours, I can assure you, someone will come up to you and ask you to leave. If you're there watching your child, or if you're there just as a spectator, watching a practice, watching a game, no one's going to chase you away. But I think it would be ill-advised for the school board to relax a safety and security policy, even if it was violated years ago. The times have changed, and I think we would be uncomfortable, and we'd also be put with the decision of how do we discriminate between Mr. Horassis and some other individual who means our children harm? It would be an impossible situation to manage. And I think if you were running on the track in May at six o'clock in the afternoon, as long as our track kids weren't there, no one would say anything to you. I've walked the track myself on off-hours.
But you asked, like you said, that's still a violation.
Well, maybe I should be arrested for that.
Let's also take this into perspective.
But I think, I think we need to really, this is, I think we've answered Mr. Horassis's question, and I would invite Mr. Horassis to, if he wants to continue the conversation about this, to speak through the superintendent, because we have a policy in place, there's a law in place, and as far as I'm concerned, the board has a responsibility to enforce the policy.
But also...
But I appreciate the fact that you came to us, and that you are identifying issues that we need to pay attention to.
Eric, can I just ask, can our attorney get us a copy of the statute, since it's in our back seat, actually see what it says word for word?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, Mike, even if a statute didn't exist, I would support a board policy that doesn't allow access to school grounds during school hours, unless somebody has been, you know, a legitimate reason to be there.
I have some other questions related to this, too, though. I don't want to belabor, but I don't know what our policy...
I think maybe then what we'll do, if any further questions, I think we direct to the Chair of Policy, to the Chair of Safety and Security.
But if it's the law, if it's the law, what, we can't have a policy that's going to violate the law.
What is the rule? The law that you're not allowed on school ground, or is the law that if you're on school grounds, without permission, if you, for two, under two C, and specifically state schools, if they are on school grounds, and they are notified or posted, it's considered criminal trespass. If they're not notified, it's considered defiant. Now, once he, since that individual who may have been rude to you, or however you may perceive it, or was following you, or whatever the case may be, he did notify you that you weren't allowed to be on school grounds, in that case, it would be criminal trespass. John, looking at four o'clock in the afternoon, school's out, there's no track team out there. Even though the law says that, wouldn't we, as the school district, have to press charges if we wanted to?
Correct.
So I think what Dr. Portellino was saying, that we want to share our property, our track, our facilities, with our community, we just don't feel we can do it while our students... students are present, and so...
That's a good point.
So, we're not looking to press charges against you or anybody else who uses the track, uses the tennis courts, right, that's on our property too, uh, who plays some soccer on the field, uh, we're happy we have these facilities that our community uses, and of course, our recreation department uses our facilities all the time, um, you know, with, with our agreements with us and so on, um, but it's during school hours that we're worried, because, as Dr. Portolino said, we can't manage, you know, who should be there, who's allowed on the track, who's not at twelve noon, and if the phys ed teacher goes out with students, and there are fifteen people all on the track, because at first, they didn't see anybody, right, nobody's out, well, now, phys ed classes are coming out, we don't want our phys ed teachers to be in a confrontational situation with, with adults who may refuse, know we're here, we're going to finish our last lap, and whatever it may be, so, so for all of those reasons, it can become very complicated.
Madam President, just so I'm clear, if I have more questions at this point, I address them to Dr. Freed with the Security Committee or in board and executive session, I, I just don't know where to go with my questions.
I would, I would consult with Dr. Freed first.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I, just so, just to be clear, I just want to understand that, so during school hours, no, nobody's allowed on, on the grounds?
Shouldn't be.
I, I mean, and if there's people on the grounds, I mean...
Well, if they have a purpose to be there, of course, because they're coming, because they want to drop off their child lunch, or they have a conference, and there's reasons for them to be there, but they shouldn't be there to be using our facilities, um...
Right, routine applications, there's routine applications.
People just walking on the sidewalk, as you, uh, you know, not even use a facility, as like walking on sidewalks, is a violation?
Consider school grounds.
That cuts through the ground, right, I just want to be clear that if somebody on the sidewalk, you know...
You know where people have them walking, should free them, over the community center?
Yeah.
I go by, there are a lot of people walking around here, it's not a border mile.
Right, but, but don't want to, don't, don't cut through them, don't, don't want them to go around there, don't want them to act.
Could I, could I direct, in fact, since I can't ask questions of the board, I've been told, I'd like to ask you a question.
Mike, actually, in theory, he should only be directing his comments to me as the president, and our five minutes are up.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't know it was time limit.
It is time limit, five minutes.
All right, all right, well, thank you for, I guess, I guess, I'm chatting, but thank you.
Well, we accomplished that you know what the law is now.
Oh, yeah, okay, great.
Mr. Harasses, we're sorry if we can't accommodate what your request is, but, I mean, I, I think, in the, in the, you know, we, we do it for the safety of the students, I hope you understand that. Okay, I, I'm sorry. Um, okay, no further comments, motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.